And then you do two of them?
Yeah.
And I like the warning camp, too, that you're just saying up to 10:5. I don't know if we'll have 10:5, but I'm pretty sure we'll have 10.
Is that unspent money for the year?
Yeah.
And you'll have to sign this. You'll have to sign here as a witness.
As a witness, okay.
Do you want to do minutes?
Sure.
I didn't have any, any issues with regard to the November 17 meeting, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes
Cam will take that, I'm sure.
As, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstained.
Okay. So Bob isn't standing?
He wasn't here.
He wasn't here. Huh?
I put the date next to my signature.
Oh, okay, I'll do the same.
Okay.
This is continuation. Tobin is here, but he says he has to cancel this one, correct?
Not cancel, but continue.
Continue, yeah.
Okay.
It's January 12th.
Yeah, it'll be January 12th. That'll be our first meeting.
You have to be to a date certain.
Yeah, we probably should wait until another 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Just in case anybody shows up specifically for this, that...
Well, actually, since we're, we're talking about it, is there anybody who is specifically here for the Miller Van Villette on Three Willow Lane for the Pleasant Lake Watershed Ordinance? Not yet.
Not yet.
I think all the evoters were present at the ZBA meeting, so they were, so they probably were all aware of this has been continued.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Dick called me just on the way in.
Yeah, did he?
I told him it was going to be continued.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do a little karaoke or something, or?
Go outside and see if we can see snow.
Not yet.
Tonight, though, right?
Well, it went from snow to flurries.
Yeah.
Which is okay with me.
Looks like it's pretty much staying out to, out to sea.
Good.
Yeah.
When is Miller's at? 7:10? 7:15?
Yeah, unfortunately.
We'll wait till 7:10.
Oh, I guess we can, I can mention about, I did contact Glenda.
Glenda?
Glenda. Told her what, what we had discussed, gave her a copy of the, what we received from town council, and I didn't hear, haven't heard anything else from her yet.
No.
Okay, so it just falls in her court right now.
And she did, did contact the surveyor, or the guy who drew up the plan, the engineer, Dick Wood, had, has passed away, so he's not doing any more design work.
Somewhere.
His brain is gone now.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right. So, so I, I don't know what she's going to do.
Okay.
Okay, no.
It's on a holding pattern, then?
Yeah.
Actually, should keep.
Am I the next with also the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because the Bear Paw is a non-binding meeting, so we could do that first, and then?
Oh.
That's right, too. That isn't yet. It's not a continuation.
Okay, go ahead. It's good. Take it away.
All right.
There's some more upstairs, too, and I, okay, you got one, okay.
Okay, so for the record, my name is Tobin Barwell, Barwell Engineering Services. And yeah, I'm, I'm here. Bear Paw Regional Greenways contacted me regarding this property, 12 Perry Road, which is tax map 409, lot 55. It's quite large. It's almost 171 acres. They would like to use it as, and there are buildings on site. This is about 2,000 feet of driveway, and it's very rural driveway, and they would like to use it as Bear Paw headquarters, which, what does that mean? That would mean that, that people would be there every day, and I took that as to mean also that would require site plan review from the town.
Yeah.
And clearly, this 12-foot, it's a beautiful, everything you'd want to do in your own personal driveway. Stone walls, it crosses a stream, but unfortunately, it clearly does not meet the site plan review regulations for life safety. You know, why do we have these, town of Deerfield requires an 18-foot wide with two-foot shoulders on either side, and, and it doesn't meet that. And I guess I want to bring it forward to you, as this is a great opportunity. You know, Bear Paw, I think we all, if anybody's familiar with them, they are a great organization, and I would think that the town would want to, to help them, but there are life safety concerns that we have to address. And so I wanted to get your feeling, also, you know, site lighting, parking area up in here, our drainage would be other concerns that, you know, would require them to put in, invest money in, in onsite upgrades. And again, because it's 171 acres, they have, they're very land-conscious and, and I, I seeing it as being a good fit for, for this, for this location. I guess my next steps, I want to talk with you about it, get any input, but I certainly also want to reach out to the fire department. I have on, in past projects, we have long driveways. You create turnouts. That would, that would, emergency vehicles, that way, if an emergency vehicle's coming in and meets another vehicle, the other vehicle can pull out somewhere, and fire truck can, can pull over somewhere and, and set up what they need to do for life safety. I, probably my biggest concern is the stream crossing, which frankly, I'm not quite sure where it is on this map, but it, it appeared to be a reinforced concrete pipe with a stone head wall, sort of, very marginal, don't know what the reaction would be from the fire department to ensure that the fire truck could have access to go over it. I'm not sure what the weight of the fire truck apparatus would be, that they would want to ensure access to this site. So as my, as, you know, I did a report, and I looked at, at this, and I thought our first step would be to reach out to the planning board and get your input and any thoughts and any questions. I do have, so intensity of use, I guess, would be, would be my first question to them, and this is what I got, that it's 18 to 20 people is absolute maximum onsite on an annual basis, something like a strategic planning session. 15 people would be there on a monthly basis for board meetings, five to 10 people on a weekly basis, some sort of committee meetings, and three to five people on a daily basis would, would, we'd be, be up in here. So it, it's certainly not, you know, just an annual meeting place. It, it's a daily operation that people would be in a period. So, so that's my, that's my schmear. I know this is a non-binding meeting, but I am truly looking for your input and concerns that I should bring up when I do go see the fire chief and talk to him about it.
Tobin, are we expecting Al to be here for this meeting tonight?
I don't believe, I, I was contacted by Bruce Adami, and it is Al's property. He did not indicate that Al would be here. I wouldn't even know him if I saw him.
He's not.
Okay, I don't know what he looks like.
Go ahead.
My, my name is Bonnie Bobian, and I'm on the board of Bear Paw, so I was just here to listen also. And I hadn't, I haven't met Tobin yet, but now I, hello.
Hello.
I'm, I'm just part of a small subcommittee that is working on this idea, so I'm just here to listen and possibly answer some questions, to the extent of my knowledge, which probably isn't great, but...
Well, may I ask a question?
Go ahead, Paul.
Has there been any thought given to constructing a new building that's close to the road so that the access, that the amount of driveway that has to be approved is minimized?
That, that is not out of the question. It's, any, anything is possible. That, that could be part of a solution.
I like your suggestion, Tobin, with regard to a few turnouts to allow emergency vehicles to, to be able to pass at, and, but certainly with the numbers, number of people potentially going to be there, we might have to have... How long is the driveway?
About 2,000 feet.
2,000 feet. It's longer than mine.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm at 2,000. You need room.
Yeah. So I think, yeah, that's going to be an issue, I think, and as you say, you're, you're going to be checking with the fire chief anyway, so that'll get some input from him. You don't know what the class of that, that pipe is, do you?
What did it look, did you look at it yourself?
I, I went there and looked. I stuck my head in. I can't even 100% confirm that it's...
Would you, how much cover's on it?
Yeah.
Not enough.
Okay.
Okay.
And it's been like that for a long time?
Sure. Looks beautiful, but it's not very, you know, if, it's not ace-20 loaded, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
It brought concern to you right off the bat?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's not good for single axle fire trucks.
Yeah.
Right, but that, I mean, it's not the end of the world. We can certainly do a, you know, box culvert or something to replace it.
Yeah.
But...
Well, you can go back with concrete pipe. You, you know, you don't want to get into a box culvert, because it's a lot more money.
I think you would have to.
Oh, it's that big?
The stream crossing guideline.
What size is the pipe right now? 24, 36?
I think 36, but I don't know.
Oh, okay, so it's a big pipe.
It's a pretty good size, right.
It's a good sized pipe. So you'd have to, okay. I see what you're talking about.
Right, and that's not the only thing. Probably the biggest, certainly, is the width of the road, right? And there are stone walls and trees on either side, you know, so that would be more of a cost, you know, 2,000 feet by expanding it nine feet plus. You're talking a lot of trees, stumping, gravel, the whole line.
Or you could do like the town, you just pave right over the stump. Yeah, so I mean, which, the, the culvert obviously is, is something that you have to take a look at, you know. Was it sized on how much water was going through, or was it what they had?
Right, good question, good question. So I, you know, my, my toe is barely in the water at this point.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So even if you do turnouts, there's still going to be areas that are probably going to have to be upgraded, no matter what.
Absolutely. Right, and, and determining, I don't know if you, have you guys kind of done a project similar to this? And every 500 feet have a pull-off, every 1,000 feet? I, I think I've, I've worked on everything in between.
Well, if, you know, 500 feet's quite a ways if an ambulance is coming up.
Yeah.
Sure is.
Tobin, in that area, isn't there like a field or an overgrown field about halfway up that hill?
There, there is, there was some field.
So that can be utilized, correct?
Well, and I was thinking in the wintertime, right? If it's wintertime, you can't. Summertime, absolutely.
Right.
In summertime, I, you know, also depends on what type of vehicle, that you could pull it off the road.
Right.
But absolutely, but again, I'm not sure how strategically they're placed along this long driveway. And I guess I, you know, I don't want to just focus on that. Also, parking lot lighting, you know, we are talking three to five people. That's, that's pretty low to, to require parking lot lighting. And, and again, you know, this is, this would fit with the flavor, parking lot lighting for three to five people on Bear Paw land, conservative of the land would not be the greatest. Is that, you know, something like that that would be, but then I understand there is life safety issues that are at play here, the town granted.
Bonnie?
Yes.
So do you guys have, like, every once in a while, don't you guys have large, like, get-togethers and stuff where you have a lot of people?
Not, not very. We have an annual meeting, and maybe 60 or 70 people might.
Okay, would, would you have it there? I'm just asking for a general knowledge.
Correct, correct. And we, we have not had one there, but that doesn't mean...
Mean you wouldn't?
We wouldn't.
Okay.
But that would definitely be...
But that's an annual?
Annual, right.
Okay.
Right.
Walk for him?
Yeah, probably.
Give us a call, Tobin, when there's about six feet of snow. And we'll see what it looks like.
Okay, all right. Yeah, let me, let me, I think, I think it's meet with the fire chief and see.
Yeah.
Get his thoughts and opinions on it. And then I would love to have you guys walk out there and maybe meet with the...
Yeah, I have some members of the Bear Paws there.
Sure, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. Go ahead, Don.
Tobin, you mentioned parking lot lighting. Last I knew, Al was all off the grid up there, so what is, what is the lighting going to be powered by?
It was just a thought. I know it is off the grid, but, you know.
Because we're talking, again, we're talking 2,000 feet of driveway, so you're talking a quite extensive amount of line to get up in there if you were going to power it.
That's right.
So that would, that would be primary power, so that would make your, that would do a lot to your road also. You'd have to make sure, A, you could make sure there was enough clearance for the line to get up through there. So that would be something.
Yeah.
You don't want to go under.
Do you see the amount of ledge up through there? There's, on those steep grades, there's a lot of ledge up through there, so I don't...
And it costs more anyway.
Yeah.
Just costs more.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
I was just curious. When you said lighting, I knew Al was all battery powered up there, so.
Right.
I didn't know what you meant by lighting.
Well, do you know how much of the property is in conservation easement right now?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
Most of that driveway, for example, beyond conservation land?
So this is the, oh, that's a lot line to be eliminated.
I guess what I'm just wondering...
I don't know it off the top.
Is maybe we should get a copy of the easement, because if there's deed restrictions on the conservation land, then that might limit things like turnouts or power lines or...
I, I know this is not in conservation land. It, this, this has been the area with the building. What's that?
I said there's a portion there that's been subdivided off.
It was a lot line adjustment. There was an issue, and then it was combined.
I think Al bought that secondary after. There was three, if I remember correctly, there was three gentlemen that bought it together, or three families. Al being one of the last ones that's there, so when the middle person left, I think Al and Thayer McCain, the original ones, bought a, separated a piece of property between the two of them.
But there was a subdivision just done within the last year, Eric and Belinda, I can't remember their last names, but I can, I can see the portion there.
Yeah. That's the people that bought McCain's original piece.
And it is a scenic road, yeah. It's a scenic road as well. So the issue of, you know, additional trees may have to be cut in order to facilitate driveway access, but frankly, when I went in there, it's not bad.
I was going to say, the mouth of the driveway is pretty wide.
Yeah.
That's where he used to park. He'd walk up.
Right, right.
Okay, so you want to meet with the fire chief and discuss some stuff with him? Now, do you want to schedule a site walk, or do you want to wait until you talk to him and then come back to us?
I think I'd rather wait.
Okay.
And maybe I'll, Cameron will send you the information that I do have, and, and if, you know, all the going items of, of stuff that we need waiver floors or we need to be in compliance with the regulations would be helpful as well.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So we'll wait to hear back from you on this particular issue for Bear Paws. Anybody else have any?
Yeah, any other comments?
Any questions?
Hopefully, the weather cooperates.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so we will go back to the continuation of the Pleasant Lake Watershed Ordinance, Miller Van Villette on Three Willow Lane, which is now to be continued to January 12, 2022.
Yeah, well, we are still in front of the zoning board. They had some comments. We are adjusting the footprint of the building in order to accommodate that, so it will be changed by the time we get back to you guys.
I'll make a motion for continuation to January 12. First item on the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Tobin.
Thank you. We'll be in touch.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, we have a conceptual meeting, and it's a continuation of a public hearing for a major subdivision for Ed and Sandra Cross of Range Road.
Oh, on the major subdivision, we want to continue that.
Okay, that's the first one?
Yeah. The engineer just buried.
Okay, so you're going to continue that?
Correct.
January 12, is that good? Do you know?
Is that the first, is that the next meeting?
Well, that would be...
Well, our next meeting's next week.
Next week.
It's next week.
Yeah.
Okay, so then the, the following meeting would be the January 12.
Would you rather?
But you got holidays between now and beginning of January, so do you think you'll be ready for that meeting?
Or the, or the second meeting in January.
Or do you want to go for the second meeting in January?
Second meeting.
Can we go for the first?
Okay, yeah, I mean, you can go for the first and then just let Jane know if it's not going to happen.
Yeah.
Because it's not on my hands.
No, I understand that. Okay.
So January 12.
We're going to continue the major subdivision to January 12.
I'm going to get motions, so there'd be a second item on the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next one is following public hearing, major subdivision for continuation, public hearing, minor subdivision, Edward and Sandra Cross on Range Road.
I'll even split it, if you can. Got mask on, that's it. So if you look at the plan, you'll notice that we moved the lot line to what you were looking for us to do.
Mm-hmm.
Other than, so we shifted things around. There's the frontage you need, everything meets all the other specs that are required for that. So there's not an awful lot more. With, with that being said, I just want to publicly just voice, you know, my opinion is that I don't believe things were done properly on the re-layout of the road, and I wanted to make sure that me presenting this particular plan, I still have that objection, but yet I followed everything that the town required for me to get that subdivision approved. And I do have a letter just stating basically what I just said.
Okay.
Just to put it part of the record, if you would, please. But yet I complied with what your wishes were.
That was from the selectmen, correct?
That was that, nothing definitively was said here other than that was what we had discussed verbally.
Okay.
That it wasn't going to be approved without me adjusting the plan accordingly.
You have something?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So we continued it because I needed to figure out just what I was going to do.
Okay.
And I know it's been a while. It just hadn't, you know, I was trying to get both of them done at the same time, and where my major kept getting pushed, I just decided to move forward and get this done tonight.
Okay. Fred, any questions?
Yeah, well, the only, the only addition I would say is the, the layout of Class 6 and whatever, whatever the date that was.
So a note on there according to what you are doing, the, the new rig layout date?
You have discontinued... You have discontinued there and then laid out at whatever, whatever the date that was.
I'm not sure what that date was. I think it was a couple of weeks.
So do you have a copy?
No.
Well, you should probably give them.
Yeah, I'll give them that.
But.
Okay, why?
A copy of the decoration by the town that they want to make it a class six road. Like, I don't have.
Okay.
You need to want a, a kind of a date and what was done.
That was the paperwork I got.
Yeah, whatever.
That, is that what you have?
Yes, that's it. I've never, you haven't seen this.
Okay. So it'd just be a note underneath the, your Ridge Road?
Yep. Yep, right words, obvious. Okay. Your thing is not working.
So will this be a class six road now that he'll utilize for his driveway?
Yeah.
And that's basically what this states. Just to have something clear and documented.
And isn't there a letter from the selector that has to authorize that with the waivers and whatever technicality, but?
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't believe so because of, I believe that this was started prior to them actually officially laying out the road. And that the permit, that the building permit was already granted. So I didn't.
You already, you already have a building permit, so. And the, and the appeal period on that is gone.
Yeah, it was given to me back in March.
Yeah, so I.
I don't, I don't believe there's anything that's kind of holding it up.
No, I think, I think from that standpoint, even, even though they're supposed to have the, this agreement, building permit's already been issued. I don't, we may have to talk to town council, but I, the fact that you have the building permit, you, you acquired it properly and things changed or may have changed, but you've got the building permit, so.
Sounds right at the movement of the house.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah.
So basically, all we want is a note of what we just gave Roscoe on the plan.
Yeah.
So that's just a condition of approval.
That's a condition.
You want to give me the exact verbiage or you want me to?
Oh, just.
Reference that.
Just reference, reference the layout.
Is this going to get you recorded or anything?
Uh, no, it ends up.
It's being in your file.
It ends up going into the town clerk's file and that's, that, that's the official.
I don't know the one.
That's the official date when she stamps that, which is, I think is the day after.
Well, I got 12th of October.
Yeah, that would be it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So other than that, everything else is, is okay?
Yeah, it looks like it to me. I don't know. Anybody else any comments?
The only thing I had is, and it probably won't matter anyways, but was that permit with a contingency of the class six? There was no contingency laws in there?
At the time, the permit was given, that.
Yeah, okay.
That wasn't a contingency.
I wasn't here at that point in time, so just clarification from me.
This, this, my permit came way, way before any controversy was started in sometime in May.
Okay.
Yeah, right. It's a correct statement. I say that's a correct statement. Yep.
Okay. So.
The other comments?
Any public comment? Go ahead.
So will the persons who live on class six roads sign agreements regarding driveway, driveways and usage maintenance? Will that also be the circumstance here?
Yeah, the, it's a darn good question. And I, the, typically, we, we don't issue, the town doesn't issue a building permit until that is obtained from the board of selectmen. The fact that he's already gotten the building permit, and I guess it's pretty close to a C.O.
Yeah, that'll be tomorrow, hopefully.
Yeah, right. That puts that, that requirement into question. And I guess the, I guess we'll have to check with town council to see what, what their thoughts are.
Is it just a matter of having that letter written?
Is it private property according to the plan?
I'm just, I'm just talking about getting a fire engine up and downhill.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's not maintained or, you know.
So you guys had to basically do whatever you did for your construction, correct? So you had to upgrade to whatever you could to do your work.
We did minimal work while.
That's what I'm saying.
Because, you know.
But you got concrete trucks up there.
Everybody, I've been up and down that road with trucks, like.
Okay.
You can't even count them.
Because if a concrete truck won't make it up there, a fire truck won't.
I'm just thinking, Fred and Pete, that if the select board issues their standard letter, it includes a, some kind of a waiver to keep the town from being liable if emergency vehicle can't get in there for some reason. And I'm just thinking of having that on file for.
So I guess the question would be, and this is.
Protection.
So I have a question because I'm, I need to know the answer. So if it were just a driveway, would that same requirement be there?
No.
Okay, so that's what I thought. And that's why I don't think at this point it's a relevant topic because of the time that's been passed since the building permit's been given. And I understand it's, whatever the situation is, it would be hard, it would be hard for you to press on a new requirement based on something that I received back in March without any issues.
That's why I said I.
Yes.
We're going to have to talk to our town council. This is not something that really involves the planning board. This is the board of selectmen and.
This doesn't happen every day.
No, it doesn't.
No.
Thank goodness.
No, it doesn't.
So. We can grant conditional approval.
Yeah.
Waiting for that to be addressed on the plan.
Mm-hmm.
And then whenever you do it, I can sign it.
So I'll make a motion to grant conditional approval subject to the adding in the, the layout of, of Ridge Road, which occurred in October of this, this year.
October 12th, 2021?
Be added to the note on the plan. That is a class six road.
Okay. Second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 See if Jane or her. With the other one.
The other one, yeah.
See much quicker with this.
Okay, yeah, so as soon as you get all of that, get ahold of Jane and Jane or.
Yeah, I'm going to give.
Call me directly and get it to Jane and.
Make a new one.
Yeah.
I'll come here and sign it.
They won't take it.
All right.
So if you can just.
All right.
Excuse me, Roscoe? Can I make a request that you, if you can, send me a PDF?
I'm going to decide that. You can drop my chart right to a checker.
Oh, okay.
Because I'll forget.
Do you have a card?
If you don't.
Just leave it on page eight.
Yes.
That would be the best.
Yeah, write it on this.
I could email you. How about I just email you mine?
Okay.
I think I have your email.
Yeah, but hardly one.
Yeah.
He doesn't want a lady.
Hopefully, this one's there, I guess.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
I'm going to see Rick.
This isn't.
Okay.
No, I won't get it to him because it will never make it.
I can't watch.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Just leave it for me and I, I'm not going in trouble. As long as I have it when I record the, the plan, that's important.
Where are we on that?
Thank you.
Hey.
It's all paid, okay.
Yeah, I haven't been up to, I've been too busy. Go ahead.
Um, I just want to say for the record that the board, we did receive public comments for the major subdivision for Edcross. But because it was continued, I think, you know.
We'll read them then.
Well, yeah, we'll read them then.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Okay. So.
That's all we had.
Yeah. Yeah, the situation here, because he's, he had obtained a building permit.
Prior to that.
Prior to, he, he's saying that it was in dispute.
Yeah, that's fine. He can say whatever he wants.
Right.
Okay, and then, you know, obviously he decided to go this route, which is good for everybody. And then, obviously, if somebody else were to build on the road, they're under a new standard.
Yeah, right.
Right, exactly. So, or any other road before it gets that far. The Carol has a comment. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I have a question. The last three or four minutes of the, of the discussion prior to the vote was about the issue you're just talking about, the class six. Fourth open title thing. I thought I heard that you were going to talk to town council about the agreement. And then that was part of the conditional agreement. How does that?
No, well, that.
Yeah, how, this, this. Even if you talk to town council, you already got an agreement, right?
He already has the, he already has the building permit.
Can I have a copy of that?
It was conditioned, it was conditioned on the marking on the map, but not on what you had talked about in terms of talking to town council. I was puzzled.
Right.
I was puzzled by that.
Because that ends up, basically comes between the board of selectmen and him, not the planning board.
He doesn't have to go to the board of selectmen again, does he?
Well, that's the question I have to raise with town council. The, the, I was trying to find the section in the statute and have to, have to work again.
Even though he's got this conditional approval, he may yet have to go to the town, to the select board to get further approval because he's now on a class six road.
Right.
And he'll claim he's got a building permit, so he doesn't need to.
Right.
So that's, that's just a different fight. Is that the deal?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
I'm saying one thing, one way or the other, I was just.
That's why I asked, asked that question about the contingency.
Right, yeah.
So to me, I just. Do you want to read this letter from his attorney?
I think it's not that good.
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm willing to sacrifice it. So you guys can read it. No, no, just go ahead and take it because I'm going to put it in a file.
Yeah, and I've, I've got a, one copy anyway. I'll attach to the minutes.
Because what I'm worried about Fred is that he is going to possibly hold the town responsible now for maintaining that road because we don't have the standard waiver letter on record.
Well.
No, I don't, I don't see that at all.
Well, he, he can, he can do whatever he wants, okay? Doesn't mean that the town's going to do what he wants. And based on what I'm reading here, it could go to court. I'm not saying he's going to, but it could. So it's, you know, it, it just depends on how far he wants to go.
Mike, I understand the contingency question. I understand the historicity, historicity of his claim. But there has been what's effectively force majeure, that is to say, the, the, the town has made a change. And I guess my question is, is he exempt from that, even to the point of, of the maintenance that you, that you all are talking about?
Well, you know, if he did not have a building permit prior to that change, it would be a completely different story.
Yeah.
But because he had a building permit prior to the change, he's got a pretty good leg.
But was the building permit based on a different thing than what the outcome came?
What it was at the time.
There's a lot.
Based on an, an understanding by the building inspector that the road had been.
Discontinued.
Discontinued and reverted back to the abutters. And the select, the board of selectmen had a difference of opinion with regard to that in that. My understanding is that the town warrant for 19, in 1939, had, had a specifically saying, discontinue Ridge Road and subject to gates and bars.
Correct.
And that the warrant article was brought up, was not amended. There was no minutes, no minutes saying it was amended to return it to the, the land to the abutters. And so as a consequence, the board of selectmen's interpretation is that it was discontinued subject to gates and bars. And his interpretation is because it didn't say subject to gates and bars, that reverted back to the abutters. And typically, typically, my understanding is that when it would be reverting back to the abutters, it would be a situation where the, the town didn't, hadn't compensated people in the beginning when the road was originally laid out. And in this particular instance, you can go through the whole listing of this guy got another little piece of land here and this guy got one or two pounds of.
Yeah.
For compensation.
Monetaries here.
Yeah, so the town bought it, the, the land.
Correct.
So he's got a case on his letter that he gave us called Hirsch v. Polinsky from 2007. So he's, his attorney is citing a case saying that it's, the burden of proving a piece of land is public, road is on the party asserting the public road exists. Okay, he's, that's his case law. Now, I'm sure that our attorney can.
Yeah.
Come up with something as well.
Yeah.
So at this particular point, his, the only reason he's got what he has is because the building permit was.
Was issued.
Was issued.
Right.
And that's it.
Backing away from this particular case, he, part of his argument was based on a map on the, on the building inspector's wall.
Yeah.
Which he actually handed out to, to the crowd that was assembled. Either the planning board or the town may be thinking about looking at those and saying, you know, what blocks are the, the, kind of stuff that's happening? And there's as much as like 20.
Oh, yeah, and, and was it Joanne Watson? Apparently she's had, done the research on that. But I don't know if we're in the position to go back through and relook at every one of these to see.
All right. This is yours, Cam.
Um, so this will, this will probably come up at the selectmen's meeting.
Yes. Okay.
And just, Joe, just for your information and Denise and Bonnie's too. The issuing of the, issuance of the building permit is, is supposed to wait until this other document has been signed by the owner and, and I don't know if the selectmen have to sign it or not, but agreeing to these conditions. And because the permit was already issued, it's going to be an after the fact attempt to have this document signed.
Not a great place to stand on.
No, no, from the standpoint of the board of selectmen, it's not. You want a motion?
Yes.
Does anybody have anything to say?
Jane says yes.
I'll get to it, Karen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Quarter and eight, God. Weird, or he keeps knowing. Oh, yeah, it should be on. I kind of thought of something else. Oh, my God.
Well, they won the other night.
Yeah, I know. I watched that.